First thing on the agenda, please follow your head. Dear Lord, please give us the guidance that you see fit in order to direct this city in a manner that is within the range of your communications. Please oversee our city staff and oversee our citizens as they perform their duties throughout their days. Also, please oversee our military as they perform the actions to protect our freedoms that we so stand up for. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Would you like to vouch for the flag?
Yes, I would vouch for the American flag.
Let's lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Next, I would like to do a proclamation for constitutionally for the Dodge of Revolution. I think we have somebody here?
Yes.
Okay. If you'd like to stand.
I do.
What do they call that military? Have they got a lot of salad or?
Yeah. They called them metal, I went through the metal detector and I said it off. I mean, I went to, well, I went to the audience of the council and I went through their metal detector and I said it off.
Well, we don't have one of those here yet.
Well, I didn't say it off.
So proclamation, whereas September 17th through 23rd, 2014 marks the 228th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, whereas the fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary to the patriotic celebration which we will commemorate the occasion. And whereas the public law, 1915 guarantees the issuing of proclamations each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution League. Therefore, I, Michael Seder, as the Mayor of Delverton Garden City Council of Texas, on behalf of Delverton Garden City Council, do proclaim this week, September 17th through the 23rd, as Constitution League and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties from remembering that those rights may never be regained. I fix my name and seal to this as of this day. She doesn't want that? I don't know. Somebody left it. Let's get your name up. So I would like to present this to you. Thank you very much. We appreciate you showing up.
I would just like to thank the City Council of Delverton Gardens for writing this proclamation and I think all of you all for just coming and listening to it tonight.
Thank you.
They're here because of this, I know.
Actually, before I do citizens comments, I'm going to move on to item number six first, April regarding the key PTA membership. If you'd like to do a presentation of that, do introductions?
Sure. We'll start with Tiffany Jackson. She's our president at Key Elementary. She is the president.
And principal.
Yes, I'm the principal. Good evening. I'm Tiffany Jackson. I'm the principal at Key Elementary and this is Brandon Howard. He's our assistant principal at Key Elementary. And I just wanted to say to you guys, I'm so happy to be here and to introduce myself. I have been at Key for seven years, almost four years assistant principal and now three years as principal. And I'd like to say this community is amazing and the children that we serve and the parents that we serve are amazing. And I couldn't be more blessed to be the principal at Key Elementary. And so I wanted to take the opportunity to say to you guys that one of the district initiatives that we have is community involvement. DWG has been amazing to us. We can always count on the police department, the fire department, whatever we need to support us in anything and everything that we do. And we are looking to have some more involvement from the community. So tonight, we came out, April Lowe and Carrie Foster are some PTA representatives and they're going to share with you guys how you can be involved, how you can become more involved at Key Elementary. We'd love to see more people from the community in our school. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Good evening. My name's Carrie Foster and I'm the VP of Membership for Key Elementary PTA. And as a parent with children at Key, I want to say thank you to the City Council, to our phenomenal police department, the chief laborer, for being such a strong supporter of our campus. Our campus can only be as strong as the community that we're a part of and Key Elementary is very blessed to be a part of Delverton Gardens. Both Texas and National PTA have encouraged our local councils to involve our community members in PTA. PTA is more than just teachers and parents and we're very aware that the community plays a very, very crucial role in the strength of our campus. As representatives of Delverton Gardens, I want to challenge each of you to set an example for your constituents by joining Key Elementary PTA. Now, don't panic because joining PTA is not going to suck you into the black hole of volunteering and more meetings and committees of all.
We don't have more kids. I don't have ten more kids, do I?
No, no, absolutely not. It does not require you to have four children. Although if you want to be attending more meetings or be a part of committees or to volunteer, we will happily find ways that we can plug you in in those areas. Strictly, your membership is making a statement to your community, which is, I support the school in my community and I desire for it to be an exceptional place for kids to learn. You're aware that City Council, as City Council members, that strong schools in your community attract people to live and be a part of this community, to conduct business in this community, to find jobs in this community. And your membership in key PTA would be a simple way to demonstrate to those constituents and citizens and many others that you continue to support the school that resides in your city. A commitment of eight dollars is all it takes to become a member of key PTA and help us remain a strong activist for our children. Four dollars and fifty cents of that eight dollars goes towards the National and Texas State PTA, which is the largest grassroots organization for our children in the state and the nation. The additional three dollars and fifty cents stays directly at key PTA and it's able to continue to provide field trips for every student in the school, incentives, technology, materials, and other things that are not covered by our school district. I want to thank you in advance for your support of this effort and I look forward to working with you as we all desire to make Delverton Gardens a premier community to live in and be a part of. And I will pass, just kind of start these over here, if you're interested in being a part of PTA, we'll pass these around. There is information where you can either mail your support in or you're feel free to drop it by the front office at school.
We mail them, don't we?
Either way, you can mail them. Feel free to mail them or drop them by the front office during school.
Oh, it's okay.
Are you kidding me? My daughter lost it.
And I just want to thank you in advance and I want to introduce.
I already have one member.
Yes. Good. And I want to introduce.
And I'll force you to hand the rest out to the other citizens and people just so that, I don't, for Chief, you're already at home.
Yeah, you got.
Chief, Chief's already a member.
These kids are already there.
There you go. Y'all coughed it up.
No pressure. And I'm going to let April Lowe as our assistant volunteer coordinator and I'm going to let her say she's your member.
Thanks, Carrie. Thank y'all so much for having us here tonight. I'm going to read off my iPad because I have a lot of notes on how to suck you into the black hole of volunteering because that's my job. We would love for y'all to become PTA members. We would also love to have y'all volunteer on campus. I've been a reserve officer here at DWG since 2011. I'm this year's assistant volunteer coordinator. I work with Suzanne Hudson. Like I said, not only do we want y'all to become a part of our PTA community, we'd love to see your faces at our events on campus. One of the great things about living here in DWG is that we get to have this small-town camaraderie and I think Carrie's kind of touched on that, in a close-knit city. And our police officers and firemen, our parents of kids at Key, some of the City Council members have kids at Key or grandparents at Key. Many of our current residents went to Key and some of the teachers that still work or teach at Key. And we love that this relationship has been fostered over a couple generations and we want to keep that tradition continued. So in order to volunteer at Key, you'll need to go to the AISD website. I don't have a floor because all of your, any sign up would need to be online. It's www.aisd.net. And with the application, you'll need to submit a government-issued ID. And when you go to the website from a computer, the volunteer link will show up on a drop-down list under District. I know y'all are taking really good notes. Unless y'all pin, but. If you access the website from your phone, a volunteer link actually shows up for you. I do not recommend filling out an application to volunteer on your phone. It is very, very tiny. So your membership is good for the current school year till June 30th of the following year? Okay. You'll select Key Elementary as the school that you want to volunteer at and once your application and ID have been submitted, AISD is going to send us the list and they'll send you a list, or send you a notification supposedly in your email. They've got a new computer system working with the applications this year and they'll let you know if you've been approved. If you have to be an approved volunteer, that means you've got to, you've got to pass the criminal background check through the public safety.
That's our council.
So if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. That is the one kicker that we do. If you do want to volunteer at Key, you want to become a PTA member, I don't think you have two or three hours to volunteer to be a PTA member, not to be a PTA member, but to volunteer, to show up on campus, to show up to events, you've got to be approved. I'm sure everybody in this room would be perfectly fine. So thanks again for having us tonight. We really hope that you'll help us be a rock star school in AISD this year and most importantly, we hope that you'll help us give the best elementary school experience to our kids because these kids really do deserve it. Thanks, y'all.
Honor flight, there you go. No doubt, it was a must.
You got it. Drive it last and all that kind of stuff.
That's the online application if I'd like to volunteer, sir. I'm already volunteering at Martin. I'm already approved. So I already know the process. I was just adding to their PTA. How do you like your? Thank you very much for the presentation. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you guys so much.
It was very nice meeting you. If you do need anything from that school, if you can't get ahold of the chief, please contact myself or Melinda, the city staff. We do appreciate the school being here and we'd like to see that, you know, events going on. We try to help out and do all those things. So we like the little kids around, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm also going to jump around to item number 13, the request for the Warfighting 5K event, eventing Warrior Project. And who's presenting that?
Bryce Peterman. Hello. Bryce Peterman, I work at Lockheed Martin in Grand Prairie, actually, and I'm in a leadership development program there. And there's a number of requirements of the highly encouraged community service projects. So typically, being a majority of the jobs at Lockheed are engineering-based, they go to schools and talk about science, technology, engineering, and math. But I came with the idea to do a 5K run fundraiser and just have all the proceeds benefit wounded warrior, have some flyers here. I've worked with chief and a little bit getting the route down, wherever the race would actually take place. The date is November 8th.
Should you have ordered?
The route is actually on the back, so it's 8:00 AM start time and it'd be about two hours, I would say, so until 10 o'clock. Sorry, sir. So there would be minor traffic regulation for the runners that morning on Saturday. We have plans in place to have some volunteers direct traffic on those days, so it wouldn't be a complete blockage. You'd just be kind of directing traffic, stop and go as runners come by. We're expecting over 100 runners. That would make me very happy and that would allow us, depending on how many corporate sponsorships, we would be able to give about $2,500 to $3,000 to wounded warrior. And I guess Chief put me on the agenda just to kind of pitch that and give you questions or concerns.
Yes, sir. We annually, we've annually a long time have had in Key fund running this, that, and the this is an additional run and certainly one of the councils to approve it. Very worthwhile cause, Bryce has worked hard on it and we have our people, we can support this and with some of our volunteers and officers and certainly a worthy cause. The only drawback to this whole issue is Bryce did this work and he is an annual engineer. That's the only issue that we found.
Don't check it, yeah, don't check it.
But other than that, it's a great deal.
So you did the Mac, make sure that's right.
Yes, the website did it for me, actually.
I did drive it. Okay, I saw him actually.
We're used to it. He's a, that's why he asked me to check.
So somebody like to make a motion for the approval of the 5K?
I have a motion for approval.
I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? One question.
Yes, sir.
What are you going to do about parking?
Parking, we have discussed that a little bit and there are along the road here with parking and then there's also an opportunity for overflow into some of the, I guess it's Gardens Park right here.
Some of the park and some to the north.
Yes, sir.
You got that figured out?
I could also park at Key, couldn't I?
I could.
Actually, they just have to run a little bit further. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All in.
Thank you very much. Well done, Bryce. Thank you.
Okay. And then I'm also going to jump real quick to number 12, employee health benefits renewal writing. Would you like to?
You bet.
Step up and give us the badges?
The news?
Yeah. Obama affair went away.
Okay, I think you should have the cover letter that I created for the meeting tonight. So in a nutshell, as you may recall, last December, we changed our anniversary date to December from March to get ahead of some of the changes with healthcare reform. We received our renewal. We have the opportunity under transitional policy period number two, as part of the Affordable Care Act, to maintain our current group plan benefits and rate structure as they currently are comprised today. We have that option of renewing, in other words, as-is. That renewal as-is is about a 6% increase over current cost, about a $13,000 increase in cost to the city. Or we have the option of transitioning to an ACA or Affordable Care compliant renewal, which changes our rating methodology. It also changes our plan designs. That option is more costly to the city. It's about a $19,000 increase. However, it is less costly to your staff that are covering dependents. The benefits are not the same as that which we currently have. There are variations in deductibles, copays, prescription copays, and out-of-pocket compared to what we currently have. Additionally, for those that are covered in the high deductible health plan or the HSA, those that are covering family units with three or more dependents participating would be at a greater risk of out-of-pocket compared to what they have today. That's a plan design differential. That's a part of reform. One of the things that I believe makes the ACA compliant option more complicated for political subdivision is the rating methodology for small employers. We go from a composite or an average kind of rating to age-banded rates. So for budgeting purposes, certainly would make it more difficult should you have an open position because the range of rates between the lowest age band and the highest is about a $1,000 difference per person. So if you had an open position, you don't know what to budget. So that certainly makes it a little more complicated. We have the opportunity to renew our current plan for another 12 months. What happens 12 months from now? I can't tell you if that plan will or will not be an option, but we do know it's an option at least for the next 12 months.
So your letter basically, the December 2015, you're saying for this next year, we're good?
Yes.
If we renew currently?
That is correct.
But for sure, we're going to be in a situation next year that's going to have to be more complicated as far as the?
I don't know that for sure.
Okay, but the plan we currently have is going away.
Six months, six months ago, based on what was communicated via Health and Human Services, we were confident that you wouldn't have this choice now. But those rules have changed, so therefore we have the option of continuing what we have. So it's, I wish I could tell you that my best answer I can give you is I don't know.
Good enough.
Keep your current plan, it's $13,700.
Yes, and we did market your plan to get competitive quotes to make sure we were covering the bases and doing our due diligence, but this was our best option.
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion regarding the renewal of our plan? I think we've already budgeted the number appropriately based upon.
Do I make a motion to renew the plan?
I have a motion for renewal approval. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
All in.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, sir. Sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let me go back to my, I know I had to switch it back and forth in the two separate. So we got that, we got that? Okay, let's move back to our normal city council meeting. Item number one, the agenda of citizens comments. Do we have any citizens? I think I have it's done.
Hi, Dave. Pat Newton, 3304 Elkin Drive, Delverton Gardens. Ah, I'll be brief. In response to an open records request, we received erroneous data for the electricity costs of the water and sewer operations for 2009 through 2013. The city sent corrected data and informed us that all the original numbers were related to a different expense category and electricity costs have been paid out of the general fund instead of the water and sewer fund due to a flaw in the accounting system. With revised data from the city, we asked the following questions. If the costs you initially provided us were not electricity costs, what were they? For how long has the accounting system flaw been in place and what is the city doing to correct it? To what account in the general fund were electricity costs actually booked? Why was the electricity cost in 2011 double? Why was the electricity cost in 2011 double the amount of any other year? How much well water was produced in 2011 that might account for such a large expense increase that year? Melinda, very responsive, said she'd have an answer for us within a week. Weeks passed and follow-up emails were ignored until on September 10th, we received a certified letter from our city attorney. In his letter, he made a number of factually incorrect statements upon which he apparently based his legal position. We would best describe as, quote, "DWG is not required to answer any of these questions and will not answer them."
How'd you read the other?
Our response to Mr. Jeffrey and the entire city council is simply this. We don't treat citizens this way in DWG and your letter has no real meaning to us. The state of Texas has laws in place that protect citizens like us with legitimate questions about how elected leaders are spending our money from governing bodies like our city council that deploys tactics demonstrated by this letter. With actual electricity costs of 100 grand, the water and sewer business of the city operated at a loss in 2011 instead of earning a profit of $47,000. The loss would have been approximately $50,000. We don't understand how this is possible, given that according to the city council, DWG sources approximately half of its water from its city-owned wells, which the purchase cost unlike Fort Worth water is zero. Further, in 2011, we sold XTO 15 million gallons of water supposedly at high margin. So over the last four fiscal years for which we have data, DWG Water and Sewer Department operated at a loss in two of the four years despite hard margin sales to XTO. The entire subject is alarming to us. In closing, we say, why not simply answer our questions? Regardless, we are undeterred by Mr. Jeffrey's letter and we sincerely ask the council not waste any more of our tax dollars on unnecessary legal fees. Thank you for your time this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I'm a citizen. I'd like to speak before you.
I will not close it. Any other citizens that like to make a citizen's comment? I'll let you go, sir. I'm going to give him the last floor. Go ahead.
I'd like to talk first off about the discovery I made because of my emails back and forth to Councilman Jim Pilan. And he introduced me to something called Honor Flight DFW. And I hope everybody here is aware of this program. It's volunteers that take World War II veterans up to Washington DC in our area to see the World War II memorial up there. All right? And I made a promise, first off, I commend Councilman Jim Pilan for what he does for them. I made a promise that I would send one of the vets, Jim?
Thank you.
And I challenge XTO to match that. Okay? Thank you very much. You got it. That's outstanding. If you look it up, if anybody has, it's Honor Flight DFW. It's just a tremendous thing that they do. Let me start off with the leases, Mayor. First off, thank you for meeting with me last Wednesday. I think we were in agreement that we don't, let's use the word bamboozled tonight. I think we both got a little bit bamboozled on our leases. You with the 30 cents, me with the cost free, everybody's familiar with it. I sent you an email. I haven't gotten a response yet. Understand the budget's going on. I'd like to make a recommendation involving you, Mr. Jeffrey. If I may, can I call you Jim? I'm Steve.
I've known you for a while, so.
All right. I have an idea that I like to put out there. All right? When you look up the word bamboozle, the first word in there is deceit. And I think they deceive, we're very deceptive to our citizens over this. Mr. Motley has been kind enough a few council meetings ago to say, I asked for that cost free and I was given it. How about we do something? There's a, there's an act out there, Jim, that you're, I'm sure, very familiar with. It's called the Texas Deceptive Trade Practices Act. And if you read that act and you don't read in Chesapeake and XTO for what we've all been going through, I don't want to say anything further on that. But I would like to work with Mr. Jeffrey on possibly filling out a complaint on behalf of the citizens that didn't receive that. I think we can pressure XTO to get those leases, the names, or I'll volunteer to do a mailer to the pool to find out who didn't get them that was qualified. I'm putting it out there. It's up to you. These were all the people in the 5,000-foot halo. Going on to what we own as a city, we own 77.8 acres. We're getting a 28% royalty, 3% override. We talked about it. I averaged it out, we're getting $493,000 per year in royalty and override royalty revenue. My first question, I'll just leave that for afterwards, have we become dependent on it? All right? And it would certainly explain, I mean, why we've been so divided. This division- This division, I would like to bury, we can't be divided, we've got to be together on this to get some answers. The biggest thing going on in our neighborhood, and I'll read them off where we're going to have a problem in this town, it's only going to get worse. I own 1.6 acres, and that's a pretty big tract in our pool. And most of you are in the pool. Jim, I know you're not. Mayor Tetter, I know you're not. But I want to read off. These are real comps. 3300 E.V. Court, value of their home, $338,000 appraised value, 2009 before drilling. Sold 10/26/11, $200,000. My neighbor, just this year, value of his home at 3304 E.V. Court, $392,400, sold, $291,100. This guy that lives at 3306 E.V. Court, value of his house, 2009, $552,100. Appraised value this year, $370,600. These wells are affecting property values. We have to face this. What is going to happen? You're going to end up with no support from your citizens. If we don't address what we're going to do going forward, start it off by the lease, make sure that Dan doesn't leave, keep us informed about what's going on with Brad Castlebury in Austin, communicate. We're asking for communication. We want to be part of it. We've been hurt, we've been damaged. The thing, where this is going, and this is probably an answer I'd like to ask Mr. Jeffrey. I have a real problem, and let me be the first, thank you, Melinda, for the survey and the 272 documents you gave me yesterday on the desk. Very informative. I have a problem with the date because it looks like they got their permit on 4/7/09. They should have had a permit before they leased a bunch of properties, if that's how, you know, worse like in other cities. They should have had a drilling permit in 2007 when it was approved by council. That's a question. I'll leave it open. My question is, this was designed by Jacobs Engineering. Don't we think there was some responsibility for them to recognize this was an impoundment, an earthen embankment, or a dam? That's a question. It seems to me, in this discussion that is online that you had with DD Jet and Harding Company, it seems to be it was established, and I know it's a long time ago, and I looked this up, but it was established that this was a flood plain. Now, I'm only going by what's read here, that's the first I've heard of it. But from what I've gotten from Mr. Motley is that if it was a flood plain, that the US Army Corps of Engineers should have been called in. And there, here's another question I have. Did any civil engineer from the US Army Corps of Engineers sign off on this? I know this firsthand because by pad site in Mansfield, I had to move 47 feet, and I had a drainage ditch just as small as what we have. And Mansfield made them contact US Army Corps of Engineers. This goes to accountability. And holding XTO's feet to the fire, and what I mean by that, we've got to have a monthly inspector. It's got to happen. And I know you've interviewed the gentleman I put you in touch with. I haven't heard back from him. It's our safety, Mayor. You know, God forbid we have some other leaks once they put these things in production. You're going to have an uprising, and you're going to have citizens banding together to revoke this permit. All right? And that's going to be ugly, and I don't know what it takes, but this is another question for Mr. Jeffrey. To put this in, what kind of a petition would the citizens have to put together to revoke their license? Or would it have to be a vote with council first?
I can't answer that question, sir.
Okay. Basically what I'm saying, they need to improve their code of conduct. And the code of conduct, I read through what, again, Melinda gave me, as briefly as I could, it was 272 pages. There's violations out there right now that Halsey didn't get. So, you know, we need somebody out there inspecting it that's unaffiliated, unconflicted with doing business on the other side. That's what we have. Everybody, thank you for your time. Thanks for letting me run a little over.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Mr. Jeffries?
Yes. Mr. Noonan didn't read...
Please state your name.
My name is Jim Jeffrey. I'm a property owner in Doward and Gardens. I'm the city attorney. Mr. Noonan chose not to read the entire letter I wrote to him, and I think it's appropriate to read the whole letter. Dear Mr. Noonan, I am the city attorney for Doward and Gardens, Texas. You have recently sent a series of emails to city administrator, city secretary Melinda Bertain, requesting that she respond to your latest request for information, and in the emails, you have sometimes referred to an August 29, 2014, open record request. The city does not have an August 29 open record request from you, but instead does have a request dated August 28, 2014. I'm responding on behalf of the city to August 28, 2014 request. Since I am not the public information officer, please continue to direct any future information requests to city secretary Melinda Bertain. As a starting point, to help you understand specific responses made on behalf of DWG to your specific requests, I direct you to Texas Government Code Section 552.002. That statute generally defines matters that are considered public records. Related to that statutory definition, the Texas Attorney General has repeatedly ruled that the Open Records Act does not require a governmental body to create or prepare new information, nor does the Act require preparation of information in the form requested by a member of the public. Related to this, the Attorney General has also ruled, more than once, that the Open Records Act does not require a governmental entity to answer general questions. Even though staff was not required to do so, staff has already provided information that addresses some of the six questions in your August 28 request. The information you sought for question number two was previously provided and was explained in Ms. Bertain's August 19, 2014 email to you. Information addressing your question number three was in the summary of the general account provided in Ms. Bertain's August 19 email. A copy of information that addresses your question number six is now available at City Hall. The copy charge for that material is $1.75, which you may pay when you pick up the records at City Hall. Question numbers one through five that you sent to the city on its public information request form that you signed August 28, 2014, do not seek information that is considered a public record within the meaning of Government Code Section 552.002. Your questions are in fact that, questions of a general nature which DWG is not and was not required to answer. Additional information will not be provided. Respectfully submitted, James D. Jeffrey Jr., city attorney. So in fact, Mayor, the information that was sought was furnished in part, and the city does not have to answer questions or create information, and I explained that to Mr. Noonan, but he chose not to read the whole letter, so I've read the whole letter.
Just to clarify, it's on our website. We did post it on our website, and my reply to you is there as well.
Yeah, and in the reply...
Total citizens' comments, thank you very much. Moving on. Two mayor and council comments, any council members, any council that can make this time?
No.
Yes?
You. I have a lot of things I'd like to say, and I'm trying to measure those under advice. It's still be civil. I've been with this council for 29 years, and I get to see the city being falsely attacked and criticized by a citizen with an agenda that's hard to comprehend. Mr. Noonan, you came in here last month and read a letter full of errors, I'd like to use the word lies, but I won't. You've continually harassed our city administrator with rude, snide emails, and you accuse the council of misappropriating money and numerous other actions. Yeah, it's sad, and I, you're sad. I'm sorry for your personal problems that cause you to feel like you have to try to find the gotcha. For the past month, we've been in budget work sessions. I haven't seen you out here once, seeing what the process is going to go on. So, continue with your cursing. That's all I have.
Any other council comments? No? Goodbye and close, council comments. Moving on to departmental courts. Chief, could you cover your EPS report, please?
Yes, sir, I'll agree. Is that the month of August, we ran 1,705 calls for service, and the majority of those calls were type investigative type calls, and we did have, we've had a large swing up of domestic issues and disturbance calls and domestic violence. Had several, had a pretty good caseload of investigations, some of it continues to be cyber crimes and identity theft issues. We had a couple of serious assaults and pretty violent domestics during the month, but officers responded to them, peace was kept, appropriate people went to jail, appropriate cases were filed, and guys did that all without hurting anybody or hurting themselves, which we're pretty proud of. It was a busy month, calls still, calls for service still have a tendency to tick up. This time last year, for instance, we were answering about 980 calls to 1,000 calls a month, so it's, business is good. Business is good. And several trips to JPS on MHMRA issues.
Hey, sir? Melinda, could you cover your report?
For August 2014, the budget should have been at the 90% mark in the office. General fund revenues were at 99.6%, and expenses were at 94%. Sales taxes were up by 14.19% compared to the payment last year, and the percentage of total payments changed to date compared to last year is 90%. Adware collections were at 103% complete for a total of $838,482 to date. Collection completed August 2013 stood at 101% complete this time last year. And then added to our, again, skip it if you want me to. The budget was at 83% in July. At the end of July, general revenues were at 94% from the budget, of the budget, and the expenses were at 86%. Sales taxes were up 33% from the comparable payment for last year. And adware collections were at 102% complete at the end of July.
Somebody would like to make motion regarding the departmental courts? Motion for approval. Motion for approval, do I have a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Motion carries. Moving on to item number four, minutes of August 20th, 27th, September 16th, 17th of 2014 council meetings. Someone I'd like to make a motion regarding those minutes? I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Motion carries. Moving on to action item for executive session, someone like to make motion regarding the attorney's contractual formation or moving forward with the attorney. What's the, give me the wording of that.
I would request that you approve your attorney that's been retained as an outside counsel going forward, as he requests.
I'm going to authorize the action recommended by the attorney.
I have a motion. The action from the attorney, do I have a second? All in favor? We've already done number six. Moving on to number seven. It's really not an actionable item, I would say, at this point, or is that, that would cover, that's the AISD?
No AISD.
So that's really kind of covered by writing a formal letter, whatever. So just so citizens know, we've had a request by AISD to potentially have an ag center or something built within the city. And so there's some questions we have, just so that we understand what the building is they really want to build and what would really be in there. So we want to understand that before we just kind of say, oh, sure, go ahead and build what we want to build. So we're waiting to get some information, and we requested that they sent us that information so we can understand better. Moving on to item number eight, potential alternative water supply. Probably not an actionable item, but at this time, we're looking at bringing some, a different source of water or connecting to another additional source, that being able to supply the city with another alternative besides Fort Worth or our well water services in order to connect our services up so that we have additional supplies, and hopefully trying to find a reduction in cost or cost savings that's beneficial to the city. So, we don't have the information at this time that we make it presentable, so we just kind of at least wanted to let people know we are looking at that and reviewing that. Moving on to item number nine, the Texas Municipal League Risk Pool Board of Trustees We need to elect somebody or appoint somebody?
Well, on place one, the incumbent, Robert Carrera, he's running the pump, so place two's the same, place three's the same. Only one with a choice is Peter Vargas in place four, Arona Strainville. I don't know Peter Vargas. Then maybe you can, and I don't know Arona Strainville, so I can only go by what they've written here on their short bios that they have.
So since you're the lawyer and you have insight into this, what's your recommendations?
I don't know Arona Strainville at all, nothing I can add or subtract. Peter is an honorable man, very smart, very hardworking.
And also Peter isn't incumbent?
Yes.
I didn't realize that.
Yes.
Yes.
So he's incumbent.
I'm going to re-vote for Robert Carrera.
Peter.
No.
Oh, oh.
For place one. John Foley for place two, George Chappell for place three, and Peter Vargas for place four. One second.